Okay, I'm going to ask you stand, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. After we may have all the members of the bill are up. I pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we are truly grateful for the day that you've given to us. Grateful that you are who you are, and you're the Lord that is in control of all things. Lord, as we face these times, we pray for your blessings upon those who are sick. We pray for your comfort for those who are grieving because of loss of loved ones. And we pray, Lord, of your protection over our city and our citizens, our workers, everybody that is here. We pray, Lord, that you help us to keep our faith and trust you in all things. I pray, Lord, that you bless our meeting now, for Christ's sake, I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'm going to ask God. I might have a bad battery, I don't know, Bobby. I just went dead on one. I've got a red light. Sorry about that, a specimen's going out loud on the phone. Okay, I'm going to go ask our clerk if he'll do roll call for us. Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman, roll call for a regular meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman, April 14th, 2020. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Dorey.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy.
Virtually present.
Mayor, let the record show that Alderman McCoy is present and accounted for via telephone under the state open meetings laws currently in place due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show a quorum of the board is present. Okay. Would like to welcome everybody who is here watching by live video, or will be viewing later on YouTube, or also on the 96.5 radio station. This is, I guess, first to a lot of municipalities, it certainly is for us, but we're going to go ahead and conduct our meeting like we would if you were here. So, starting with number one, we're going to talk with our CPA, she's going to give us a financial report. Mayor, you might want to just reference if there are any comments that the Alderman Board got. Okay. Good point. If anyone has a question or comment for one of the agenda items, which as we go through this, if you have your Alderman's phone number, or you can message them on Facebook, they have their phones with them, if you'd like a question in relation to our agenda on our -- on our agenda that we have for tonight. So, if you would, you can certainly reach out to them on Facebook or Facebook Live and ask if you have a question, especially in relation to the COVID-19 outbreak and its ramifications. So, that means anything else?
Minutes.
Pardon?
Minutes.
Oh, yeah. Now, we're going to have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, has everybody looked at those? You have those in front of you?
I make the motion to approve all as submitted.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey, a second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number one on our agenda, thank you Jay for pointing, I went right on by that, is review of a financial statement by our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke.
Okay. Included in your packets are the balance sheet as of February the 29th, 2020, these are all pro-COVID-19 statements. The statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the eight months ending February the 29th, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. In summary, the town has combined cash of 6.9 million, of that restricted funds are 3.6 million in the hydro and 1.8 million in the sales tax fund. We still have investments of 3.8 million, which includes the hydro reserve fund of 2.3 million and 1.5 million in the general fund. The total assets are 33.6 million, the total liabilities are 5.6 million, the fund balance is 28 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the eight months ending February 29th, 20 indicates that you have combined revenues of 22.1 million, or 60% of the total budget, and total expenditures of 21.1 million, or 60% of the total budget, and for the net change in position of $999,000 at 58% of the total budget. In order to provide more transparency and a clear understanding of the variances in the budget, I have concluded in your packet an overall budget analysis by department as of February the 29th, 2020, including written comments on the variances between the actual and budgeted revenues over expenditures. The reason for the increase in the change in net position from the previous month is due to the revenues from the hydro royalties. They are now at 51% of the budget at the end of February. The production had increased at the maximum amount since January, and with this increase in royalty rate of 1.2% that began in January, it's estimated the town should recover all but 275,000 of the net revenues by the end of the fiscal year. The next royalty payment the town will receive on May 1st will be in the amount of 5.1 million. Approximately 1.7 million of the 3.6 million dollar capital outlay budget has been expended through February 2020. The road improvements did not begin as it planned, and the river is up, which indicate that construction is behind schedule and will possibly carry over to the next fiscal year. Preliminary work has begun on the 2021 budget, but due to the COVID-19 virus, we are limiting the number of meetings to discuss. The department heads have been approached to have their budgets to me by the end of the week. At this time, the board members will be contacted by phone when the budget is prepared to get their input, unless anything changes. The budget will be presented at the May 12th meeting, and a special meeting will be scheduled by the end of May. At the present time, it's too early to amend the 2019-20 budget, but it will need to be amended before the end of the fiscal year in June. The March and later financial statements will begin to show the effects of the COVID-19. We expect sales tax revenue and collections to be lower, the convention center revenues will decrease, collection of utility revenues will be lower, and we will have paid more in salary and wages during this time of crisis. However, on the positive side, LWCC paid a $74,000 in workers comp premium, which we're not expecting until the end of the fiscal year, or into the next fiscal year, actually. There are loans available if we need them, funding from FEMA is available for limited items that we could be reimbursed for and that we're keeping track of. Additional federal funding has been set aside to help pay utilities for low-income households through law heap program, and other possible legislation is in the process to help state and local governments, which we're trying to keep, you know, just become aware of them and try to figure out if they'll apply to anything that we have or not, which, you know, it's an ongoing process. But that's it.
Okay, thank you Deborah. Any questions from the Alderman on the financial report? I would like to say that, if you've been reading the papers, there's a lot of municipalities throughout the state are in financial problems, or having problems right now. I think some of the surprises were in the town of, I mean, city of Ruston and some others are having to have major layoffs strictly because of schools, especially the college towns had to shut down early. Some small municipalities that don't own their own utilities are experiencing bad problems and layoffs. I want to assure our employees and our residents that we're sound, that we're financially sound, that we have no plans to lay anybody off, and that, you know, the finances are in good shape. The only good benefit we can see out of the river is the hydro is really, really having some good generation, and you can tell by the royalty check we'll be getting the first to make. But anyway, it's just, it's a good position to be in, we're financially ready for anything that comes our way right now, and we just hope we get through this crisis sooner than later. So, if there's not any questions from any of the Alderman? Okay. Let's go to our occupational license. First one we're going to have is Ms. Alma Bowman. This is not a new business, this is just moving of residents, she's moving her location. She's moving to, her new address is going to be, I don't see it on here.
618 Riverside, I think.
Pardon?
618 Riverside.
Is that where, okay, that's where it's going to, okay. I didn't know if that was current. So, do I hear a motion, we accept this?
I submit.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey to hear a second. Alderman Probst, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next we have is River Park Dermatology Services LLC. This will be a new business, and it's on Front Street Dermatology, it's on the riverfront, so do I hear a motion, we accept this?
I submit.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey to hear a second, by Alderman Probst, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we can just have an update and discussion on our town services and ongoing projects as related to the COVID-19 outbreak and its ramifications. One of the things, first things we want to talk about is the sewer in our street. They started on sewer project, the first place they worked on was the Will Street area. Many of you know that there were some complications there. I think as of right now, other than getting some of the fences and yards put back where they need to be, they're close to, you know, that's been complete, hopefully everybody is, their sewers are working properly there for right now. They've canceled that with the river being up, it's at 57.4 today, it crested today and will start falling tomorrow. Two weeks ago, it was showing a foot a day fall, but now with the rains that we had last week, it's going to slow that fall down, and it's projected, I think, to be just under flood stage if we have no more rain in 28 days. I don't, we look to have more rain, so I look for it to stay above flood stage in the near future. So, the street, the street project overlay, they did Apple Street, they did a portion of Peach Street and the bridge that crosses over to Isaiah Street from Peach. We did run into some issues with some base had to be worked on, but they have completed the Apple Street and Peach Street area, and also they did Hickory Street and a portion of South Spruce. South Spruce will be completely overlaid from Carter Street by the new seafood restaurant all the way to the school, and then also, they'll do that soon as the river gets down to a certain level. We did run into some base problems on Hickory Street, on part of their overlay, they did have it sink down, and they had to do some base work to get that fixed. So, rather than add some cost to it, we figured it best, and they did too, to remove assets until such time we can complete the project. But we do want to get this river out so we can complete these street projects. As everybody knows, our trash pickup is back on normal times. I appreciate your patience till we got back to a normal schedule, however, we are still experiencing some issues, we are having some shortages in our workforce, as we do have some of our employees who, for different health reasons, we are certainly wanting to follow the guidelines of our healthcare workers, and also what the government advises us to do, if somebody does have a health issue, that they can get a doctor's excuse, and they can bring that to us, and we will grant them, you know, some lenient, we'd be lenient with them as far as dealing with their time off until we get through this pandemic, which puts us short of drivers. Today, I'm fixing to hire a part-time worker because we're down to drivers, we don't have enough drivers for our trucks, so this is an emergency measure to have someone on a part-time basis to maybe help drive our trucks. Also, we have other workers that, if they have turned in, and it's not necessary, we have closed the convention center as a non-essential service of the town, and I'll keep you posted on that when we feel like that can open back up. The elections have been put off, the primaries now have been pushed from June to July the 11th, that came out today, so the primary election will be July the 11th, and now the general election will be August the 15th, so make a note of that. So, that's going to be, push that off even further, so you won't see a lot of campaigning going on, and that's rightfully so, we shouldn't during this time. Also, we talked about the Mississippi River, and also would like to say one other thing before I do talk a little bit about the COVID, but also want to see if we've had any questions come in, or if there's any questions from the Alderman. There is a curfew in effect in Vidalia, and curfew's from 10 to 5. I've asked the police chief to enforce that, if there's cars up and down, you know, in neighborhoods, I feel like they have a right to stop them, ask them what they're doing. If they go into an essential job, or if they're out and have a legitimate business, we certainly think they're not, they shouldn't be disturbed. However, we will have to check, because it is important for people to be off the street and congregating after 10 o'clock. But also, we're encouraging people not to congregate at all, we're asking you not to do that, we're asking you to social distance yourself throughout the town, it's just only going to save lives, we hope that everybody will practice that. And also, to keep your meetings to the limit of 10 people and social distance during that time. Have any of the Alderman had any kind of request on anybody as far as questions, or anybody got any?
I have, pardon me, one resident has, is wanting to ask about code enforcement. Are we going back to really enforcing the grass cutting? I know for a while everything had to be paused, but are we going to pick that back up?
That's a very good question. Code enforcement is starting back up, and I've asked that, also those people who have properties where the seepage water, you can't cut grass, there's those issues, those things, we have to be real careful about looking at a yard and saying it needs cut, but you walk out in it and you'll lose your, you actually get lost. So, we want to use good judgment on that, but those who are just can be cut and should be, we'll certainly take those on a case-by-case basis. I think we want, if you're a resident and you have a neighbor who has a, if you would contact us at City Hall, or if you would contact the police department, let them know your address, if you'll call that in, we'll certainly see if the code enforcement can get around there and take a look at it, investigate it, and if it is, we'll do the necessary letters to get it cut. There is a process to that, it's timely, I'm sorry it takes a little while to do that, once an citation's issued for them to cut their grass, there's a process to go through, they bring it to us, and what we do is we send a letter to them, giving them a certain amount of time to cut their grass or do whatever's required of them, and with that time, it's usually, I can't remember if it's two weeks to 30 days, they have to remedy the situation themselves, if they don't, then we have to do another letter, send them another letter saying, "Look, if you don't do this, we're fixing to cut it ourselves and you'll get a bill." So, that's the process that it goes through, and it does take a little time, so bear with us as we start back on that. But as a resident, if you do have someone, you can call, your name will be protected, and spend file a complaint, and we'll make sure that they get it seen too. So, that is a good question.
Problem we got with that whole deal is, and that's one thing I want to do is write into orders, because we have a bitch, we continue to do that over year after year after year, and I'd like orders to be changed, which is something I'm going to plan on trying to rewrite. Hopefully, we can get support, because I think they need to be fined if you're a bitch as soon as the first notice is done. But I know, I know in my neighborhood alone, there's about two or three that they're a bitch, like it calls on often. I got one right now. We've given a citation, I've got a picture of it, the 13th of March. It still hasn't been cut, is that tall? How many each tall?
Honestly, I would think, and once they pay, I think the fee, the minimum fee for a grass cutting is $150, once they get that, I would think I would want to cut.
The thing is, the problem is, they do not, they cut it before we do that, and then they let it grow back another. So, I want to try to rewrite that order, just as a record of what I'd like to see. Where that first cut, yeah, they can either cut it or not, but that $150 if they don't, if they're cited again, I'd like to see file under the third and a thousand. I mean, something's got to be done, because if people, they'll cut it one time, 12 weeks later, they'll cut it again, and 12 weeks later, they'll cut it again. And I know, I was on this real hard with Jackie Fletcher, who was a cop guy, we watched the certain ones all over town, and so overall, in the summer, they wait till you get your letter that we spend money on, that we spend money putting it in the paper, that we spend money to put officers out there, continue to leave them noticed, and then at the end of that timeframe, they cut it, and then they wait 12 more weeks and go through the same process. So, they get three cuts out of a year, if they're lucky, they might just get two.
Well, it's a process, we can certainly find a tune, but
That's something I'd like to see.
But we have to be consistent with it, whatever we do.
Oh, yeah.
That's the other thing. Any other questions from anybody? Pi, have you got anything on Facebook Live, any questions from any of our, I mean, any questions about our city services, anything else as far as city services? I bask Lee to our overlook on the riverfront, I asked him to block that off, and also, if people keep on practicing social distancing, we're going to leave the riverfront open at this time, there's been some requests to close it because people aren't practicing the social distancing and gathering up. So, I just would ask that people continue to social distance themselves, and we can leave everything open like we got it, other than the convention center. I would also like to ask, we've got signs, I'm going to leave those out, coming into the entrance of the City Hall, there's COVID-19 stay-home signs that we've got, come by and pick you up one, we have more, I'll put more out when you get these. So, I did put several out that people requested, specific addresses, and we got those out. Again, I would just ask that, you know, right now, there's, don't listen to the, well, do pay attention, but actually, the cases, what's concerning to me is, our state number for Concordia Parish cases today on the state website today showed 19 cases with one death. In actuality, it is 36 confirmed cases with two deaths. If the state numbers are almost half, you know, are all their numbers almost half? So, you could almost double those numbers if that's the way these things are lagging behind. Today was one of the worst days for increased deaths and cases in several states across the United States. Louisiana being one of those. They're thinking the 19th is going to be the peak time that we're going to see, the 19th, we're not quite there yet, we're a few days off. So, what's that going to look like? I just want to encourage everybody that, again, this is not something that, I saw something else on Facebook, somebody had an event they wanted to go to, that they were mad because they wasn't able to have it. This isn't, you know, they said that, you know, we're making, blowing this all out of proportion, I don't know, but I don't know if you could tell that to Kiwan Bates and his family, or his friends, or us, it's no Kiwan was friends to him. We didn't blow it out of proportion. If you have a loved one that's sick with it, possibly died, I know somebody else that died today with it, and we had another death yesterday in Concordia Parish, and someone goes to our church, I go to church with, has passed away today. Don't tell that to the families that we're blowing it out of proportion, it's not. So, please, I'm asking our residents and our people to stay diligent in this, and please, please, let's get through this. And the quicker we can do the things that healthcare officials are asking us to do, the quicker we can get back to our lives, and without that, it's only going to get worse. So, please, please, let's do what's best for our fellow citizens, and also all throughout the state and throughout the world. Any other questions from the Alderman?
I do, I have a request, actually. Before we scheduled this meeting, you know, we got a phone call that there was something that we wanted to start discussing as far as, and you had mentioned it on Facebook Live, as far as taking some of those hydro revenue funds that were allocated for special projects and applying it over to try to lower the utility bills. What I would like to see the town do instead, since we just got such a wonderful financial report, and we know that the hydro revenues are going to increase by percentage and due to production this year, and we're sitting really, really well right now, people are home more, usage is up, businesses are struggling, there's so many things that are going on in the community. I would like to request that you drop that power cost adjustment right now to zero, so that the residents are paying just for the cost of electricity. I know that that's going to create a financial hardship for the town, because that's where we get revenues for quite a number of things, but the town will have the ability to recoup losses through FEMA, I know that the CARES project got passed, John Del Edward said today that over $1 billion is going to be given to the state of Louisiana, and 45% of that is going to local government. So, if there is a way to go ahead now, without having to wait and go through the process of making a special project with those leftover hydro revenues, you have the power to reduce the power cost adjustment on your own?
No, 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 I don't. It's set by ordinance, set by ordinance, and that would, it would require a change of ordinance for us to do that. I don't think that's, because that is an actual thing, the power cost adjustment is, if you go down to zero, you put your, you're making zero money to pay your men. The power cost adjustment is basically the spike up and down of power costs that you're going to pay for, and your usage and things, it's the, power changes, just like gasoline changes, all these things change. If you do that, I think the easiest thing to do is to look at that leap of one bill that is a hardship, because we're going to be way cheaper than anybody else, once that's taken off anyway, we're right there with them, if not cheaper than a lot of our competitors that sell power. But if we take that leap of one off of it, like we're going to be requesting, that's going to be, that's going to be the safest, most logical thing to make sure we keep the town solvent. To do that, you are going to put the town in a financial bind, if you do, and we want to make sure, because we're not laying off people, we want to make sure that we keep the town solvent, and be able to do that, and just instead to do that, that's pretty drastic, I wish we could, but we still have to keep the town solvent as we move forward through this pandemic.
Absolutely, you, but you do have, because it has been done in the past, you do have the power to change that power cost adjustment, you do.
Well, I did, I did once or twice lowered it, so, well, which would save the people money, but now, we also establish ordinance that sets that power cost adjustment, and that is something that I think would require council action to do that. Now, I'll verify that, but that's why I set this ordinance like I did, because to put it the way it's supposed to be legal, it's legal now with the state of how we handle our power and what we charge with it. But to change that now, no, any mayor in the future can't come in and just do with the, "Hey, I need some money," and go in and change this thing.
Right.
No, you can't do that anymore. Now, it's in the power of the people and the council, if you're going to change that, it's going to require, you know, a change of ordinance and a change of that. So, we can't, no, I have, I do not have that authority, I don't want that authority.
Yeah.
I didn't want it in the first place, but I saw it where it's necessary to help the people before, so, anyway. But I would, to do that, I think we certainly would have to look at, but I know that just calling a zero power cost adjustment would put the town in a financial bind, because if you had a spike where your costs go up, it could cost the town some pretty serious finances, it would put you in a bind in a hurry. So, we want to continue to put our town in a good financial position where we can do what we're going to try to do, maybe the next coming few months, is help them with that power cost adjustment, lower the power cost adjustment, where their bills will be, you know, something that's not as bad during the high cost, I mean, you know, your high usage months, so. And I, you know, we'll do everything the town can do, I'm willing to do, without, you know, jeopardizing the solvency of the town.
I think Alderman McCoy and the others can speak.
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
As a point of order, and since you already seem like we're in a discussion about that, can we go ahead and add that to this agenda and make some decisions on that tonight? Since we're already in a discussion about it.
No, I believe that that's going to
Yes, yes.
Well, you would have, well, to take any kind of action, Alderman McCoy, you would have to have, we'd have to add an agenda item and have a unanimous vote, and we would have to
Give them trial.
Wait, hold on, our
Listen, you know, we talked about that today, the procedure of it, we'd have to allow for public comments.
Yeah.
And we're not really set up to adequately do that.
That's a good point. Did you hear that, Alderman McCoy?
I did.
Okay. Mr. LaShawn said that, also as a point of order, you know, that required, would require public comment, and there's no way we're set up with this, you know, this new setup here to have public comment, and have people, enough people to be able to respond and give their opinion and comment on that. So, on that alone, I would think maybe we should maybe either look at a special meeting to discuss this at length, and let us look at the ramifications of what, how much we're talking about and what we're talking about. Number one, I do, I'm in complete agree and agree, agreement to, you know, lower the cost, our people are hurting right now, and it's got extra expense and maybe out of a job and so forth, but we also need to make sure that we're also maintaining this financial integrity of the town as well, so. Do you want to, so, from what I'm hearing, I don't think we could really address the issue without having another meeting and having available, some way to have public comment and put it out there for them to either write in or send in comment to enter in open meeting.
Okay. I just want to chat in, just see I just wanted to try to just see.
Okay.
Alderman Doray has an idea.
Well, and it's something, you know, the idea is something we'll certainly, you know, investigate to see how much, you know, how much we're talking about, I think that's something we can certainly look at, but to, you know, we'd have to investigate how much money we're talking about. So, all right, any other questions, comments? Are there a motion we adjourn? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, join to hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.